Pick it up. Okay, looks like we got video.
Hey, Sally, can you hear your mic? Are you there, speaker?
And then if you want to find one of the video.
Okay, I'm good, sorry. Showing the correct one.
Got one. Hey, Sally, you all good?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I gotta get up to power point, but.
Okay, alright. Call me into order here then, um, let's say the pledge. Yeah, we got everybody here, so you got a quorum. Did you hear any changes to the regular agenda? So I'm gonna promote you to accept the agenda as is.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept the.
We only make some motion, can I get a second? Sure, it is a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda, any last minute changes there, Jim or Brenton? I'm gonna look for a motion to accept them consent agenda as is.
Motion to accept consent agenda, I agree.
Last second.
Sarah makes a motion, Stephanie has a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, minutes from the last meeting on October third, see any changes, corrections in there?
Motion approved.
Stephanie makes a motion to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Emily does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any special meeting minutes? Cool, hey guys, we have October tenth, any changes, corrections there? Not a motion, a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on.
Okay.
I did not mo- I did not motion that. Jeff did.
What's?
Uh, no. Just do the agenda. Okay, I'm good.
Yep. So who, Jeff, you made a motion?
Yep.
Hey, can I get a second?
All second.
Stephanie does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, public comment, anybody got anything you wanna chat about tonight? Yep, Martin, go ahead. Get up and introduce yourself.
Um, Martin, we're all three, first I did, I don't think so, nine, count seventeen, so. Um, just wanna start off and we say thank you to the helping with the public staff. I missed come last meeting, but uh, missed the public comment, but I wanted to make sure. I think it was in properly for helping me out, um, Red Tech was speaking into my optic path, my problem is. And. I'll give you the synopsis, three times, they're in the long spot, they're on to my property, the outside of the light. And Red Tech, you know, they're gonna work on the other side of my property. And I've been working with Jim on getting his flat apps and everything to make sure that everything's okay, so I've been. One of the things for city staff, thank the public source, but, but, it leads me to uh, issues of all franchise fees. Um, we pay these franchise fees, we are in the city of Horace, and. It just makes me wonder, why did I have to be the one to correct Red Tech? On where they place these services. And I'm not talking about the one that goes to my house, I'm talking about the one that needs that, needs more policies. And, you know, Brenton and I had a talk about it, Brent says, well, tell Tom, this case. Franchise fees, because they're technically my duty and so on and so forth. But um, they do have a franchise with the station, and they do have permission to operate, operate within city working areas. So, I'm just wondering where franchise fees go, I mean, what's that budget? I mean, franchise fees are budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars. And, I mean, when this was being sold and proposed. It was meant to ensure they're in the right spot, right, that it must be some plan of view or something. Um, like I say, three times I had to correct Red Tech, obviously they didn't track the platform. They had really detailed plans where they were putting it, but they didn't put that against the platform for the reasons or. For the right way, like, and so on and so forth. So, I guess I'm just wondering what the use is on these, on these franchise fees dollars, um, one common game that I can't believe you want. They're gonna use their city lights, um, I'm, I just wanna save money to save. A thing that's definitely whatever it is, for utility, lots of, eighty-five cents or whatever, but it's much, so. I guess, I'm just, I'm just hoping the fees go to other entities, and um, that's simply the reality of the business that they're focusing on.
And you wanna expand on that?
So, Red Tech, they have franchise agreement, however, like Martin mentioned, they do not. We can't have a franchise fee because of the type of. Uh, business they are, telecommunications, they aren't federally protected, but that's right. Franchise fees, uh, yeah, we use that to help cover like streetlights, different things like that, and also those to help fund the general fund, overall.
When you say streetlight, it goes towards the streetlight, like, or like?
Electricity.
Electricity.
Yeah, maybe, like that. There is only a handful of them, they're owned by Caston Electric, years ago, they used to maintain them, however, there's quite a few within Horace. Actually, a lot that are ran by the city, uh, Caston Electric, if we need to have a light changed, they'll take the light for us, we will. Pay bill, uh, or we'll have to go take care of that, um. You have that instead of having a new streetlight fee, like, so if you have Fargo, they have a streetlight fee on top of the franchise, you get the franchise fee, goes to, um, their general fund. It's a, another revenue stream for their federal funds. So, we're using it to not now to be an issue. Because. Like, like example, and, and so, yeah, the dollars to go to general fund, you know, what, different to me.
Oh. Clarify for me then, um, what type of oversight they have as a city over and over again, like Red Tech. Or, uh, there's some contractors that have to get support.
So they're, basically the oversight they have, like with Red Tech, they, you know, fairly, our staff meets with their staff. Fairly often before, weekly, before they go tackle a different area. And mainly looking to see if they're interfering with, are they getting utilities and being within the right way from what we know. Now, if there's an issue outside of that, a lot of times they'll go with aid of usemen and things like that, so. Really can see are they interfering with our own utilities within the right way.
And so. So their engineering provides before the detail instead of document, the subcontractors, you then. They're responsible accountable to say within their boundary. Did you find that your document is different from the document they had, or were they just flat out out of the level?
They, so, they took the, we're doing ramp, so, we can use, uh, the scenario here, along seventeen. Uh, from the center seventeen, my property line is seventy-five feet. From my block flag, there's another standard white speed limit. And beyond that standard, which is my property.
Right.
There's nothing that could be placed beyond that standard, from the property. So, literally, they dug in the line and I'm like, you're in on my property, I give them a call. They came out, they measured, yep, we're on your property, they came back there, like. You see my block, it's very long, it's long, direct handed, we're, they said, back there, like. I say, I'm in there, you're on my property, and they're back, they're back. Their plan, they should be, literally, they should play with the pipe, I mean, it didn't seem to help with either of them, anyway. Um, and so. You know, it seems to me like they, they had a plan, and they showed me the plan, but it didn't, like, they didn't cross check it with the actual platform. Of where the user is, where the property line is, they hadn't opened.
That's definitely a ready tech issue.
Well, that's one second, why? When you're putting the money in, it's a tiny side, it's a little sweet.
And that is, be their responsibility, they go on their property, that's their responsibility, they're dealing with the needs, then, because there are just times where.
Yep.
That all they need to do, and they don't even know that they have any control or not, that's.
That, that's private, I get that, because the utility, that's where that falls under. I'm just trying to get a, a very clear picture of what happened, why, and how. And that's been what they got out of the right of course.
I, I'm actually not sure how they did it, like, literally, they did it on, on the new site.
So who regulates this?
On the south side, they'd have to cut back in, they go, well, it's a lot of salt, yeah, and it seems they're like, if you're on the south side.
Well, if you say they don't have a franchise fee, because they are a certain entity.
They have, they have a franchise agreement, maybe you could be operating in the right way, but if they put a utility outside of the right way. That's between them and the property owner, not the city, because a lot of times, they'll go in and claim the usemen. So that is up to Red Tech, or whatever you do, you go up to the usemen if they're outside the right, we're just saying that. With that franchise agreement, that if, for Red Tech, for example, they have a right way permit, could be a lot of great interest in cities, and if they're gonna put. Their line in city right away, they coordinate with our staff in the interstate. And you'll work with them to find a way where they can get the right.
We check that it was all done correctly afterwards, or do we just assume it was all done?
We, we don't have any, there's no oversight on.
That's all, all is the condition, we'll raise. Have their fun, go over the white side of the hearing, okay, that's the way it goes, and like. I don't know what he's been flying, type of, in this quarter or twenty five. They took it upon themselves to find the utility board or identify the areas where they have usemen, or they didn't have usemen, so identify the areas they didn't. Most of it's not, if they're in the city right, with the ability usemen, because.
Right.
Light of way, we do many, many other things, and there's enough utilities for down the city, couple times, more than here. Where it's a utility supervisor, so, Red Tech used the um, method of scatter and conquer through this. Type of a plan, I think.
Yeah, and this is, this isn't the first thing that. The Red Tech and or their subcontractor has had, if you read the news in the last couple of. Which staying in a decent or uh, right of course, depending upon our staff, past counting to bring aside. We have some issues, and I understand there is some misunderstanding there, and some verbal ingrainedness, which is not how we do things nowadays, everything needs to be right. So, um, thank you for bringing that to us, I, I'm not sure how to answer this question, because as a city. We don't necessarily have oversight of this activity, however. Red Tech in itself in caring, the subcontractors, and in coordinating with our own forces through the franchise agreement. Should be accountable to that, so, um, I wouldn't hesitate to make phone call, have you contacted their offices yet?
You know, we, I, I made a contact, it's just that, I was on me, and they say, you know, they measure, and they say, okay, okay, it's cool, and they fix it, like. It's like, I shouldn't even get the time, I don't know. Um, I have neighborhood also, that I have, you know, same thing, so.
Um, now, like, um, town, I believe, town road, yeah, so, yeah, there's been a hundred, so, fourteen, so. So, they've been off the town, we don't regulate it, uh, off town, so.
We are in the city.
Yeah, so, I mean, where, where, it's all would be regulated, if, if a utility operates within, um. The right way of a county road, they have to go through the county highway, not the city, uh, we, we can't optimize them to go through. Right way for the county, they have to go through the county, and, so that area is referred to as county.
It, it actually is a little bit of a trade area, because as a utility, um, the oversight is. Federal or state typically, which means that they don't necessarily have a person standing right there every time, I know that I've been in your situation. And I believe I have an issue in my own yard, where. A utility comes through and they were out of the usemen, of course, I wasn't there at the time that the work was being done. And now I have to deal with that, so, it's all kinds of fun, but, um, I, I don't know if we have an answer for you, but I think we can explain the process. And it wouldn't hurt to do a little more intuitive, there is some sort of oversight for that, because. The only thing I'm, the only thing I'm aware of. That's right.
We, city is, like, inside, like, in the right way, if they go outside the right way, that's a, that's a matter between the utility.
It is.
Or the usemen, or the property owner.
The landowner is the person that actually has to deal with that, and that's how it came to light through the county. Was because the county was the landowner on that previous issue that you might have read about.
So, who does a resident go after then to fix the?
You go right back to the entity that's responsible for the install in this case, that would be ready to onboard their subcontractor after that first step.
If we have, if it, it's brought to our attention, if there are no issues, any email or even call too, I'm just saying, hey, push it here. And help give them the touch of hope, so we can do that, and we have done it in the past.
Can you just let them know, like, maybe, can we just send them a quick message and just say, hey? You know, we've had, you know, some complaints, is it, you know, can you guys just be aware of where you're, you know, placing these items? Is it, is it possible to just, as a city, taking care of the residents and just saying, well, we can't do much. But what we can do is send an email and just be an advocate for you?
When we have those situations to pop up, I can say when we do, but if I have actual. Occurance that I'm able to call upon, and then I can go. Hey, so, Red Tech.
Yeah.
Here's an issue, bring it to your attention, can you address it? And, and I know Jeff knows it, itself, and the challenges we've tackled at times, and. Uh, but they know, they will send them, but sometimes they respond quick, sometimes they don't, Red Tech has been. From my experience so far, they've been responsible when we say, hey, here's an issue. Some basic acting, typically, but I don't know, I know Martin has had some other issues of it, but overall, they, they at least communicate.
They, they don't, you know, yeah. I don't know why, put it in the chair and off, put it in the chair and off, like. But I guess my last comment, everybody, you know, in theory of town, you don't get a lot of food through the city, and we get a lot of franchise fees. I mean, I guess if they grant a bunch of streetlights. Then put it on companies that get streetlights, right? And I know it's not a lot of dollars, or, but I really, let's call it what it is, I mean, if it, if it's meant to. Or something to the right way, utilities, or, but if the, the streetlight part. Then you should put two properties in the streetlight.
You're saying that the franchise fee should only be allocated to properties that have shitheads on them?
That's what exactly.
No, no, it's, it's a, that's one of the mechanisms we're using for the lights right now, that probably won't continue like that, so.
I'm just using it as a, the dollars go to the general fund. And help support, example, like, the street, I should say, example. Also go with, when we're dealing with, like, these coordination, they need utilities, and we do have, but, like I said, our focus is on the right way. And are they interfering with the different utilities, or where we're placing them within the right way? Those are the, when we're looking at that, like franchise agreements. Address different circumstances, like if we are doing a load project, when is our responsibility or their responsibility to replace or remove the line? Those are different things, that, that's what it does.
Then Jim, just give me a second, Jim, when you guys have the initial conversation with these guys, when they, when you get the project going, you know, around town, do we provide them maps? Or is that something we might want? Do they do that on their own? Okay, I just, just curious of who got. How they were made aware.
Legal files, correct?
Yeah, right, which would. Yeah, which would make sense then, but just as long as I know they have access to it, so, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So, did you say that there isn't a franchise fee for Ready Tech? But there, so which, which utilities do we have franchise fees for?
Caston Electric. So. We have Miko and Cable One, but it's for their TV.
Okay.
Not for telecommunications or advisory, it's not for any of that.
And so we're, it's just, it's a monthly fee on a bill, like, what are they, what are they? Okay, so, okay, but I mean, I do, I do see Martin's point, I mean, it's essentially just a tax. It's just another, it's just a tax that we're, it's just another way of taxing residents. So it's a percentage of the residence bill, okay, okay.
Yes, that's your question.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Anybody got anything else they wanna chit chat about tonight? Okay. Alright, we'll move on, then, let's go to uh, sheriff's update, I don't believe they're gonna do it tonight, so, I didn't get any emails, so we'll move on to nine. Lucas isn't here, so one of you two got this one.
And this is a developer, developer agreement between City and South Hill, five seventh division, uh, South Hill five seventh division is. Close to South Hill seventeen, north to South Hill fourth division, about sixty-fourth street, so, it's just south of where you see those trees, that valley area. Um, my understanding is to be. General agreement between the city, if they do for, in subdivisions, a developer agreement, is typically when there's being, they're getting private improvements. Uh, the two lots, uh, impacted, on South Hill seventh, if I remember correctly, are commercial. So, typically, you'll see in some of these commercial areas, they'll do private streets for those, in the general developers practice, they'll do private streets.
Like, what do you mean their practice in Lake Park?
Heights, it's, it's the same developer at Lakeview Heights. There is a, like, the Gary Queen, and Jack's Way, that street there is a private street. The commercial, some of these commercial areas, they do them as private streets, the private street. And we're familiar with that one, the, the stuff that's up in the private street.
Mm-hmm. Do you, I just have a really weird question, if it's a private street, do we, they use our public works? The byways and all that? No?
Okay.
As a commercial, they'll typically contact out, and have somebody come and do that, and then, I don't know how like, generate their dollars to pay for that service, but that is up. You know, sometimes they'll have like a. Like an HLE, but not, or it could be owned by the developer, a bunter, and make it out, and manage it. We require the design of the platform, it's a big repotting, and there's energy, and light, and also cases of private drive lines, and so there's a lot of confusion between the public and. Or it's probably just like a private, so, yeah, nice energy, it's fine. Most cities have radiant curves on them, radiant is around the corner, whereas on private drives, we're going to straight in driveway, so they don't walk this again. They are quiet, like the pilot, private driveway.
Hmm.
Any other questions on the verbiage?
It says, um, this. Initial dedication, um, will fulfill. The remaining land dedication for this particular builder, is that correct? Well, sorry. So that is, that is it for all of his. Uh, South Hill developments.
Is that age twelve, or what, what age twelve?
Uh, yeah, both of them, twelve.
Yeah.
So, in the refresh, the large block, off of sixty-sixth street, with dedication on South Hill Farm.
Mm-hmm.
Or either there's a, there's a large block south of that, so.
Yep, and this consumes the rest of that credit as well.
There's that up there, there's the South Hill Farm pocket park, which is based in the South Hill Street, by the pond, on seventeen, and then. So, I don't know, I'm just telling you where they are. It's satisfied or not, according to the uh, agreement. I want to.
Actually, I'm sorry, it says it reduces. Four point one four to three point five nine.
And they have three point five nine.
Okay, so they still have some remainder, that is what I'm getting, yeah.
Yes, they are allowed to overdike it. Uh, like you mentioned, uh, where they have that, I mean, this site, also, there's some of that school type, but. Also, the bank.
I was just confused, I thought, two sentences afterwards saying the land dedication credit fulfilled the remainder of the, of the dedication requirements under the same.
Native for that. Just that's the, yeah, I'll be all set.
Yep.
I see that.
Yeah, where, what, where is that again?
Yeah.
While you're taking a look at that, I also appreciate, uh, the continuation, the verbiage for the continuation of the method used half. And the landscaping standards that I speak here, where all of our states are required, so. Very, very, thank you.
Well, if, if it's a private road, is, is that what you're talking about, on the boulevard? Would that, okay, so.
It adheres to the, the organ, the city ordinance with our new landscaping, so that it's coming to life.
Yeah.
And so this is one of the first developers we've seen that will have it to it, which I appreciate.
So historically, the, the, yeah, the, the, yeah, the, yeah. Well, now, these large blocks are developing, we, we. Hello. I am chief of the development. Very, very, so, the unit instructor, anybody who wants to develop in that, is the doctor.
These are, yeah, that's a good idea.
Like, who actually, Yato's been, um, sure that they say.
They're the, the responsibility of.
Of them.
The girl that, whoever developed.
Well, we wanna make sure.
When they develop that site, you know, and you build by three, there, so, it's not terribly, not in the property, that the. The property owner, and make that to a gap, to offer, providing a estate planning, by the design review.
They're smart going for derogations, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Like a spectrum, there were even bases, you know. This is part of keeping the beautification of our city, I realize we have growth, and a number of things coming, but these things are very important things that in the past have not been enforced, and I see. Uh, also, if you look at jurisdiction under line item four. The state could develop these technologies, to receive people from the city to perform spotting zones, from a, from a, by, by, videos. So, this is, um, a good thing as well, it's the, it's the jurisdictional key when you develop.
This is another. Way in and agree then, from all that stuff, the body, audiences, but.
Making sure that they don't, uh, protect anything. These are good changes, good thing.
Thank you, any other questions on this one?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the developer's agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Same.
Jeff does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, Jimmy, you got ten.
Jurisdiction, so, South Hill Farm, fourth division. The, the, there's a bond that's part of the third division. This is around fourth division. It runs back to three twenty-seven. Great work, doesn't earn any jurisdiction of South East Town Water Resources, it's in the city of Fargo. Uh, city limits, but it will be maintained by the city of Ford. This is up on sixty-fourth avenue, north side of the road, is where it's built at, so. North of the, the industrial, the industrial, again, so, being that there's all those jurisdictions involved in that. We have to have an easement to get to the site, we have to have an easement to build it, we have to have an easement to maintain it. So what you have before is made, is an easement to build it, maintain it, and, 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 uh. Pretty much, all the, like, the long base, so, so. What has been kind of an ongoing thing for quite a while, to get all the agencies to be on something, and do what everybody's. Uh, acceptable, this, what is these opposed to, there's not a lot. Not a lot to see on these ones, if, if they're, really like, or leaving.
What were the major concerns?
Uh, the major concerns were proximity to the levee.
Yep.
They were concerning to the elevations of the top of the structures.
That was resolved?
That's being worked on right now, that's one of our participating points right now. And, and the other was, how do you access the structure, because you accept.
And, and the other was, how do you access the structure, if you have separate road is establishing the top of the levee? Um, which is, how, how you get there. Right now, almost a building, and like, probably depth of our language is driving a far away, because it's not very far off of, uh, off of sixty-fourth Avenue, but it's far enough away that they can construct it to what they have, if I got sixty-fourth Avenue, it's any structure that's beyond if they have, Fargo's gonna have a two hundred right away, and that's a hundred feet, so, or else, to that hundred feet.
I know, and so, so I'm curious, um, if this is something that we need to change.
There's not, there's been a lot of input into, they've got it far enough away.
Okay.
Number one, getting it far enough away from north of sixty-fourth Avenue.
Right.
Getting it far enough away for the future water meetings, it's gonna come from the ground, so, and the water, we've got by the way. We think it's far enough away that if anything happens, on sixty-fourth Avenue, you have, with the, the corridor going there, to build the road. And that's why you'll see that when it's piped within, it's going in far north, yeah, to stay all of the way up here.
That's the question I have, because I don't wanna have to do this.
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
We don't know what the neighbors can take up of sixty-fourth Avenue, we just have to, like, the last thing I wanted to put, close the building. Sixty-one, round.
Yeah.
Being there with a hundred foot right away on that thing, yeah, we wanna.
We have seventy-five, it's thirty-fourth Avenue, thirty-fourth, yeah, I was hundred. And, and, I think, five oh, yeah, you know, so, it's down, down in there, I'm part of the party, but. You know, we got.
I can deal with that, as long as you don't have to go back and redo.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good thing, and I wanna make sure that we take all of that into consideration before we go.
Is this some, I just, I didn't get these documents until, I didn't even have a chance to look them for the meeting. Do we, is this something we have to vote on tonight?
Um, you'll be first, if you can believe. They're a group actually, they, Southeast Water Cast, or Southeast Water Works, and since they're one of the operators of this, they actually, they've watched the program, and it's been and the way the timing was held, which is, way that it is. I thought we do it far in cities earlier, I don't know whether that's what it is.
But Southeast Cast went through these things.
Yeah, Southeast Cast, I'm gonna wrap them up, in conjunction with Lucas, so they're a tradition, I think, for Lucas, with the parties on the scene, which was Fargo, we got into the, uh, uh, the, the.
Can you bring me up just to be, how temporary is the temporary access to the?
Typically, once, uh, once it's constructed, they
Then it will fall off, okay. And then we'll have the prominent, you can.
Yeah, and then, uh, if you want to, like, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess to me, it's of southwest Ca- or Southeast Cast kinda got involved, and they've worked it out with Fargo, and I'm fine with that.
I actually kinda like the off set, on the, they kinda flipped it on it.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah, and Fargo was okay with that then, too.
They're right with that, when it's what they do.
Yep, that other.
So what issues are, are still on the table? Are they not in this agreement?
They're on.
There's something, there'll be a subsequent agreement?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, part of the height of the construction, so, so you'd have the top of money, you're what manager, if there's any construction, they've got, they'll put a fee on that. Or if it does, and you're trying to call around, they're, they're, you know, things like that, I think that's.
Mm-hmm. Jeff, any concerns?
No concerns.
Any other questions, guys? If those of them look for a motion to accept the easements, as they're presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the, I'm comfortable with what I said.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
Jeff does a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, question carries. Hey, Jim, would you give us a great update?
Division, activating and pushing forward, there is a road, you have a, uh, and like now, that's the drive and say, front of the road is that's the drive, and that's the, that's the drive, front of the road, I say, and then, front of the road, the other front of the road will be, you know, setting things up through fourteen of it, so, they're enjoying the day, so we're, we're, we're involved, but the podcast has them working on Wednesday, and they're trying to, trying to, so, with that whole purple band of our east to know, it shows them about the year, but, uh, I'm sure they'll do it like now, I guess. Pretty much, I think, they want to put people, point back, and, and, uh, whatever. Get that first, the way of a turn down, when we get that first oval line, and get, and get through that one, there's, like, you might not get all the way out, so. But, but, so we're, we're sitting right now, at one mile ninety, but, but, I'm miserable. But I threw it last week, it's been a quality. It's, 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 yeah. So.
I noticed they had covered it, uh, this itself.
It's bad, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's to be, the, the, the plastic area where you have the, down going off last week. They, 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 they.
It worked great. I was out there, thinking about that, and it's holding, I was out there on Sunday, and it was really, really
Yeah.
And, there was only one spot that was blowing up, and I was going to go back, cover the wall.
Yeah, that was, that was a very big concern, that it was gonna be something that's blown off, you know, night, and somebody needed to think about it, so.
Yeah, no, it, it, it looked like it was holding up good, it was nothing, is what I'm seeing.
So, Arrow is thirty, top of hundred seventeen Liberty, had the pre-destruction conference for that today, uh, apparently, naturally, that's the design initiative, that's the, that's the, I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, but, it's over completely, so, July of twenty-three, but.
They're opening it up?
They're opening up next Monday. So they want to get as much of everything done in the end this year.
They're gonna have materials to close it up.
Yeah, well, they, they, so, uh, they're, they're out there right now, and there's a lot of bothering looking at that site.
Yep.
So, they've got the fight, they've got, uh, the structure, we've, uh, we've, uh, we've, uh, like, they've provided them, so they'll get that, and put it in there. And they won't work on the road unless they need to, for that, but, uh, I think, uh, in, I think, like, if anything, they're gonna kill, so.
All be done, okay.
Yeah. Uh, water project, we met last Friday, we knew where we were at, like, seventeen, towards the final completion, which is today, see, they're not done. Walker up. Um, an update for that is hundred seventeen, they put back together by, obviously, scheduled for Thursday, when, like, I one of the halls up on seventeen, they're working over on Nelson, they got all the birthing done, the birthing done today. That's a, that's a temporary water freezing of the hall, but, there are new completion methods in every step, we look at, and they're not, that's what they're scheduling, so. Now, what they left for, it's not what they're doing, that's just happening to me, plus their, plus their schedule. They've provided us.
What did you say again, November?
November.
Seven.
So, so.
Um, so, can I ask, like, a logistics question? When it comes to the curb starts that need to be completed still, where people's yards have to get kind of messy? Like, the time to plant grass is, like, fast, so, what, what does that mean for my yard in springtime, and my neighbor's yards in springtime?
Do you decide to, uh, you just, and most of this fall, if you get to it, and, uh, it doesn't grow, and.
There is a warrant paper that is required.
Maybe, or, maybe, or, maybe in the spring.
It's legal. It's, 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 it's.
But I'm a stickler on subcontactors, or contactors in general, trying to complete their line item for buildings versus, and then never coming back, and resisting it, and doing it too late to the point where it doesn't make, so, if we have that issue, I encourage anyone and everyone to let me know, and we're gonna always be accountable, because as far as button change, it's two weeks.
It is, and honestly, I'm we're gonna have mud everywhere in the spring, and I am not happy about that. I have little kids that like to stay in the yard, so, um, and I can tell you that my streets, my neighbors are not gonna be happy with a complete mud hole in their yards in the spring, so.
So, they're gonna go actually, so, eleven, eleven.
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven to eleven. The scheduling is, is there support?
How many of those cities are working?
Twenty-nine, well, paving is really the only, so, free patching is on the schedule for the um, like, twenty-four, that's per asphalt.
What are they gonna do in the class shutdown?
So that is, like, scheduled, it's scheduled by going to phase right now, so, Arrow wants to control plants, and, um, there's no hesitation, it's gonna be called at the pass time, yeah.
It'll be an interesting meeting, some of them.
Hey, darling.
And we.
Oh, you haven't scheduled it yet, yes, I would do that, okay.
That's nice.
We are, I, as of last Friday, I expect us to do this week, this, this weekend, get all of seventeen done, get all this stuff done, and then, and then, and then, that's all of them, yeah. That's, I think, it would be pretty, like, it's, it's, it's. But it's, it's, um, uh, uh.
Do you have an update, or did I hear, is there an update on the stage two?
So the pump was delivered.
There we go.
Delivered prior to, you know, building, you know.
That's what I thought, so we physically.
The wall, it's built around that, so.
Okay.
So the, it's a, tiny frame, so they have to, and. December twentieth, the new pumps have arrived, that's the thing, we're getting involved, a lot of things to do. There's some challenges, I didn't converge, can't pull the pump. But you talk, um, most of Jim's feedback, I could pull the pump, a lot of many of these locations, it's not recommended. Last one, there was a temperature in New York, so that he was stabbing when the ball throws, he didn't answer the fact, so. Flapping fence throws prior to the expiration of the vault, and they're voting, you know, the ball from three, even when they do done throws and that, but, so. Um, basically, what I've learned on this, is that they're not comfortable installing their whole vault in the. So, um, we haven't, I haven't got a update from December twentieth, as to how far along into the vault and the factory are, if they did turn, which I haven't found out.
I suppose our best hope is right away in the spring, so our best hope is that these issues we're talking about tonight are, are done this year, so we can start right away in the spring. Is that, that's our best hope right now?
Yeah. So. Like, considering the supplier, it's all the time that I have to that, that's a lot. So, and, and, which, I don't know, he's, he's, like, any, not, anybody, like, thought, wanting to do something else.
Uh, males will just wait, 'cause, no use, I'm screwing you up now.
Frustrated as I am over the situation, I, if something happens to that pump, or vault, or whatever the heck it is, I'm gonna be even more mad. So, be better.
It'll take longer than, I mean.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
Yeah. No.
So, we probably didn't say that in the, the, in the, in the cases, maybe there is some data, it's, it's uh, it's supposed to follow the firm's signage today, and then, uh, that just got, so, tracking was on there last week, but. Um, some, yeah, that's funny.
Mm-hmm. Well, they almost did, it said any clubs, or, interesting.
So.
It's literally just, but, what happened?
Yep. And, um, I told a guy, one of the, 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 some, we're worried anyway.
It, it was spring?
Yep.
I saw that. Don't see what that looks like.
We need to put protections around that fire hydrant?
Fire hydrant, which one?
The one right next to the.
The, the one that's strategically placed in, um, a very unique location.
Um, so I haven't, I guess, no more.
Really?
I don't know. I, I, a little bit of one.
Steve's not here, um.
I think it's going online for something.
Yeah.
I didn't think that.
Okay.
And then, you know, the workstation, um, thirteen is the one, uh, like, you've been that one, they, they scheduled, they reached out, scheduled start up today, but did on that one, the pumps are sitting over there, it's coated, and then, then, on fourteen, we'll go over in Lakeview. That one, they do the set working, the driveway is, is sweet, and that one has temporary pump and temporary panel, two-two, like, eight times, but I think the pump area, we get with the panel, right, so, they have a temporary panel. That one, we'll be moving along as well. Everybody's third, well, did a little bit of speeding, and all of it is crashing around last week, and we're giving a list of things that need to be done, and, you know, if you know, because we've done a lot of content, so, right now, and signing, and there's always the road, signing, and, uh, off the road. And then, expressing some of their, for top one, that's right. Fine.
Did the dirt pump move?
Didn't.
Is it done, is what I'm asking?
Uh, when I checked on it last Thursday, when I got back from concrete, it, it, I was pushed down.
Going to build the fence? Because now what it was in the way of.
Reason for it to be pushed, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's, uh, yeah. But if you actually, you've got to go out, I'm, I'm, for you on, that one at the next meeting. Um, pretty much all there is to be discussed now, so.
First story to be. Maple Lake stuff done for the year, or they still work on that?
Maple was, yeah, maybe, we, we got, we took the whole thing. Got to get out there.
Right, and I.
Are they going to try to start this year? It depends on what they, uh.
And as I stated before, I, I really don't care, I would rather them work on, you see, the water stuff, so if they need to say they're done, they're done, but.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's not my response, anything, if you want to move on.
Yeah, true.
Going on, we, you know.
Speaking of that one, there's a notification that I received earlier this season that said attention, there's some temporary water, please remember, it's one pocket, half flow, overnight, two days, and things like, do you have any idea how many residents are impacted by that?
So.
There's some, and, right, I'm looking.
We're gonna.
Yeah, it's a little bit colder tonight.
So, along the same lines, I, we had a business complaint that they didn't get any notification on the wreckage last Thursday? Is there a way you can ensure that they get notification? Because they need, they need water, they also need to contact, or control it, or redo all their.
I thought, yeah, they, my understanding is that they have issues with their own pump.
It was their own water? Oh, I was told it was a water pipe that broke.
No, it was earlier in the day that I heard that, I don't know.
Okay.
Later in the day, but my understanding, what you're saying, is actually, it's, it's, but.
So there was no water pipe that spoke?
Why not, there were some issues, but.
So their issues were due to the sediment in the pipe after it was fixed, so was there a city pipe that got, that broke and then was fixed? On Thursday, was it Thursday?
Yeah, kind of that, uh, staff, but I remember, we talked about that, about you, like, you posed on the public work, you said, you know. Uh, there, there, I remember Thursday around noon. They were saying, public works, it's like, uh, like, they're, it's, 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 it was a, an internal issue of, 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 beers.
Okay.
Cause they just got back from checking was their water going to the grims off, and what they had going on, and what I understood, was it was a pumping issue, I figured, it's.
Okay.
But, the policy is not having much more info.
Well, I just, I heard about it Thursday night, from the manager.
Absolutely, talking with them.
Yeah.
I just had one question, I have a couple residents reach out about Wall Avenue. Um, were we gonna put a notice out to residents about what our timing, our time, I mean, obviously, it's on, I think people have figured out it's not happening this year, but I think we talked about getting a notice out about timetable.
Yeah, but, uh. So, uh, but then for that one, would you, did it, probably after first of the year, maybe, you know, it gets to that September, it can stand up, if you guys would get things, like, and all that stuff, so, um, hallway shakes out. Um, we don't, we had a follow-up on, we've got a couple things to follow up on, so I think it's gonna be, we have, either late, late, this, right, right.
I'd like to see maybe a notice go out to residents or something on the website or Facebook.
I, I would add, so we make sure that probably, put a whole lot more notes on it, that we actually have the details worked out, that they were going to get this at its time, and, we, it's right now, we have a general idea, but it's not, it's still here. So, that would be, it's, we wouldn't have much, be able to tell somebody, other, and, oh, in the winter, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
You done, Jim? Brent, what do you got?
Hey. Couple items here, one. Uh, Jeff and I have been busy with interviews. Well, interview for public works, so we have finance director interviews too with Lori in there. Um. Public works, we probably making an offer for one and we go there, I have not heard any status. Beyond that, yeah, yeah. And finance director, the three interviews will be three people. Probably into October. Other item I have is.
November, you mean?
November.
Otherwise we're flashing back here.
Um, other item I have is for the special assessment district twenty-eighteen dash one, and we have a special meeting on October tenth for. Uh. Since that district is so small, we did and to announce or give people a heads up about public pay off the specials, we end up trying to send them all letters saying if you've gained your special, pay the, the certified special amount of whatever was certified for their district off by October twenty-four, which will win a few more days than the ten days. In order that way they have time to get the letter in the mail and then also have approximately about a week to get it, so they try to receive the letter today, if they didn't receive it during the weekend. Um, we're trying that approach and see if that helps. Yeah, I'd say it was smaller districts, you know, it's a big problem, so it's why I need to send that out. Uh, and isolated, so if you have until October twenty-four, yeah, they have specials. Assessment for that project, if they don't want to do specials. If they don't want to pay it off at times, they want to still. Be paying a payment to starting the Brockin Jacks bill. That's all I have.
All right, uh, let's see on portfolios. So tomorrow I've got two things going on. I'm meeting with a couple of state legislators that are involved with the appropriations and both House and the Senate, see what we can do for getting some funding for this flush to Fargo project. I'm hoping that we can get some uh, get some help from the state on this one, because we got the kind of a preliminary estimate on that one and we're looking over five million bucks to do this thing now. Prices have gone up, so. See what we can do with that, but it'll be a good meeting, hopefully tomorrow. Tomorrow afternoon, I'm helping judge the science fair over at the middle school, that'd be fun. I had to miss it last year, I'm looking forward to it this year. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention, uh, we got, everybody saw that we had the childcare surveys went out with the billing. Last week, we got about two weeks on uh, getting those back in. We got uh, online, Sally, what was it today? Hundred and twenty-four replies? Thirty-three. Okay, yeah, so it's been well received, we've got a lot of uh, input from that, which is good. Um, and most of it's kind of what we think it's gonna be. There's a lot of need for this in the, in the area. Um. So. I put together with the church a meeting here coming up on September thirtieth. Want people who are having childcare concerns, issues to show up for that. Um, we're trying to get a meeting with the daycare facilities in town here. I'd like some of their representatives to show up as well. I've got Judy Lee coming out from our sender, Judy Lee is gonna come out, she is spearheading a deal with the state right now. Um, and she's got some ideas on what they're gonna be presenting to the state, so she'll be presenting that as well. And I'll be presenting whatever we have for the survey results. Then just general conversation with the public, I want them to be heard on this one. And then whatever we can pull together, help push through the state, be great, but. I want the residents to be heard on this one, so that's coming up on the thirtieth at the Luther Church at six o'clock. So. That's all I got, Sarah.
Good. Um, very, very busy wrapping up projects for the year going around, making sure that contracts are fulfilled and I'll be. Having certain meetings and difficulties, so. Got a lot coming up there and then obviously target meeting upcoming with uh personal information. Trying to visit with them a little bit about some funding availabilities and working with them on a couple of the projects, so. That's all I've got, just crazy good.
Yeah, you know me.
Been going to my planning and zoning meetings, hanging out with Russ and Julie. Every other week, I guess, and doing pretty good. Anything? New or substantial for the funding of the building? Well, it's gonna be something coming our way, um, that we'll have to talk about. Uh, some very exciting, some fun stuff, we'll just. We'll just hammer that out, so. That's it.
Be kind of cagey, right, yeah?
Well, I guess I don't know what I'm allowed to like say and not say.
No, that's fine.
To council, so I just don't wanna.
Russell's steering it down here.
If you bring in a meeting with us, people stay anxious.
Sure.
All right.
Yeah.
Noting it's public, yes. So I just wanted to make sure I.
Okay, Russell's been waiting right here, you know. Okay. All right, Stephanie, what do you got?
Uh, we've been busy too. We have um, the Halloween event coming up on the twenty-eighth, we've been working on, Sally's been working hard on that. Um, we are going to have, we're trying to convene a few more committee meetings for the hundred and fiftieth. Um. I'd say the Sunday group is coming along quite well. We have a little more work to do on the Thursday group. Um. And we're doing a, I think we're trying to schedule a larger meeting with parks. Um, been having trouble coordinating schedules on that, so. And then my only other question was, uh, do we know what the status is on our fit up here? Um, not the, not the fire hall side, but the, I can't remember the name of the company.
Yeah, the audio visual.
Yeah.
Uh, networks, the is checking where their IT company network center.
Okay.
They're, yeah.
Oh.
And I'm also, he was coordinating, he was looking to see who fired would have for electrician, do a little bit less.
Okay.
Component.
Okay.
Um. They use news by calling. Going on a little too, so they have to definitely put a picture from that.
Okay.
So that's, that's where I'm at right now on it, but I have been.
Okay.
Say, hey, we'd like to have you soon.
Um, and that's, that's all I have.
General question for you then, have you guys handed out the um the Reese uh, hat that you guys are gonna be using to the.
Oh, for the, for the glow run?
Yep.
Now that the.
Security for that hat, no, now that the construction is over, she knows that we're not gonna be crossing the highway.
Yeah, it's, we'll be planting. That people that will be. Old garden, yeah.
I thought since the construction was done, she would go that way. The only reason last year was because of the construction over here, but all of that's been cleaned up, so.
Yeah, because she, she asked, she gave it over there, I mean.
I just wanted to make sure we had crafting guards with lights, that's all I care about.
Yeah, and we, we've been talking about that. I think we got, have some volunteers in hand with lighting. Um. Yeah, yeah, but I guess I might actually live on the half either.
Yeah, it consisted of Sarah with a snowboard.
Whatever works, right?
Yeah. Talk about heart failure with little ones.
All right, Jeff, what do you got?
All right, all right, Brent mentioned, we had some interviews last week, um, some of them went really well, um, I was impressed, uh, to say the least. Um, I look forward to meeting with them again, um, hopefully in the future. And uh, other than that, all of the stuff for Metro fog was canceled last week, uh, due to nothing beyond the agenda, so um. All I got.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm looking for motion to adjourn now.
Before we adjourn, I want to wish our council and all of our residents a very happy Halloween, up for the holiday. Very excited. I think the kiddos are very excited, those beautiful candy degenerates.
Yeah, get it out of the house.
We're trick or treating.
Cold. All right.
So, somebody want to adjourn?
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, final make a motion adjourn.
All right.